Good evening, everybody. At this time, please silence your cell phones and be advised these proceedings are being recorded. For those physically present at the City Council chambers who desire to address the City Council during the meeting, please complete the Request to Speak form available in the front entrance of this Council chamber presented to the City Clerk. Speakers physically present and participating via Zoom will be called upon at the appropriate time, and each person will be allowed three minutes of speaking time. I'm going to go and call this meeting to order on Tuesday, March 12, 2024, at 6:00 PM. I'll be giving the invocation, and Councilman Henderson will be doing the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Lord, thank you, God, for bringing us here together tonight. The Lord is asking for the wisdom and guidance to do the right thing for everyone in this city. The Lord is asking for protection for our pushers, responders, and city staff, and members of the military. The Lord is with this country. Good Lord, the Lord has put pieces on the table.
Ready to begin?
I would like to lead us to the body of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with no divisions, differences,
Thank you, Councilman Henderson. So, no AB 249 disclosures. Can we have a roll call, City Clerk?
Councilmember Henderson.
Present.
Councilmember Allen.
Present.
Mayor Potem Wilson.
I am here.
Mayor Hesse.
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Are we ordering additional or removal items from the agenda? Do we have any?
No additions or deletions.
Public comment. This is an opportunity for the members of the public to comment any item not appearing on the regular agenda because of restrictions contained in California law. The City Council may not discuss or act on any item that's not on the agenda but may briefly respond to statements made or ask questions for clarifications. The mayor may also request a brief response from staff. Questions arise during the public comment or may request the matter be agenda asked for future use. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comment?
John Ruiz.
Good evening, Mayor of City Council, or Mayor in City Council. My name is John Ruiz. I am president of Grand Terrace Toastmasters Club 290, and I am here to make an announcement and also extend an invitation to the council and to the city staff and residents of Grand Terrace to our open house coming up March 22, which is a Friday at 7:00 in the morning, right down here at Asia Hill Church. Grand Terrace Toastmasters has been in the community of Grand Terrace since 1978. We had members of the council who'd been in the club. We've also had distinguished members of the community in the club. Toastmasters has been, this is our 100th year anniversary. It was established in 1924 in Orange County, and we're going to celebrate the International Convention in Orange County. Now, some people say 7:00 in the morning on Friday is no good. Well, we've got a solution for that. We're hybrid. You just go online, through our website, go online. You could sit there at your coffee table, with your coffee at the kitchen table or on your couch, and check us out. So, we have a good club. We have a lot of people who have participated in the city of Grand Terrace. I live in Redlands. I come all the way out here every Friday morning because it's a great place. We have some good things going on, so we invite you, members of the community. I'd like to give some flyers to the City Clerk here, and I also like to present some flyers out here in the hallway for members of the community. So, any questions of me about the club or anything like that?
Councilman Allen.
Hey, thanks for the, what was that date again?
It's March 22. It's a Friday at 7:00 in the morning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, sir, for the invite.
Thank you for your time. Have a great evening.
God bless.
Good evening. I'm glad I made it in time. I want to thank Ms. Robles for her time on the council. I am surprised, but congratulations. And I just want you to know, not everybody sees eye to eye every day, but I really appreciate your time. Thank you. Good luck to you.
Thank you, Bobby.
Robert Sanchez.
Good evening, Mayor, fellow council members. Just wanted to share an example of what happened sometime last week. Witnessed an individual drinking a beer outside of Grand Terrace Liquor. I walked up to him and said, hey, do you know you're not supposed to be drinking in public? He seemed not to care. I kind of followed him a little bit. He ended up going back to the Wallace House. I just called and just said, hey, you know, there's somebody out here drinking. I got a video. Can I get a supervisor to call me? So, the CEO, she actually called me back, which I was surprised. She said, it's handled. The person's back there. I said, do you want to see the video? She said, no, not necessary. We're good. So, later that week, I just went around speaking to different businesses to see, hey, how is this affecting their business? Are your customers being harassed? And sure enough, there's a lot of panhandling going on, and a lot of businesses and customers are just a little uneasy with the whole situation. So, just wanted to share some information that happened to me, but I do think the liquor store, too, has a responsibility of not letting somebody drink right outside their establishment. So, they also have that responsibility. So, just wanted to share that with the council and not. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
No more public comments.
Okay, well, go ahead and close public comment. Item C, special presentation. So, tonight, we, a bittersweet thing, you know, Ms. Robles is going to be going to far better places and, you know, enjoying herself. You know, she worked hard, and I'm a little jealous. I wish I could go there, but we have a couple things for you, Sylvia, so. How do you want to do this, Debra? You want her to come right here? Well, before she comes down, I'll read what we have for, and then I'll have the council say a few words. Sylvia, we'll wait till the council says it's, okay? So, Sylvia Rodriguez Robles, council member, for your extraordinary career and service and outstanding leadership commitment and dedication to show the Grand Terrace City Council, partnering boards and committees and community of the city of Grand Terrace from December 11, 2012, till February 6, 2024, providing our community with ex-bill quality of life and work, and as presented by the City Council. And I'm going to let our council members have a chance to say a few words. Councilman Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My life has tracked along Sylvia's life in large part because when she was working for the county of San Bernardino, I was working for the city of San Bernardino, and so we had cause, professional cause, to get together from time to time. At that time, I was not a resident of Grand Terrace, didn't think I would become a resident of Grand Terrace. Life moves on. My wife and I moved here in '84, and Sylvia was already here. Life moved on again, and I served as a chair of the Budget Advisory Committee during the major city days and subsequently served as city manager. Sylvia was on the council, one of the five council members I reported to, and not thinking again that I would ever serve with Sylvia on the city council. So, here we are. This wonderful woman, committed, significant activist in many different areas, very supportive of her family and very supportive of the community. We're going to miss you, Sylvia. I'm going to miss you personally. I've benefited a lot by your presence and your advice over the years, and I wish you the very best in this next chapter of your life.
Thank you. Councilman Allen.
Well, Sylvia, I'm in the same category of folks as Bobby is, you know? We didn't always see eye to eye, but I always respected everything that you said and did and respected you, and I just want to thank you, not just for your years of service. I've been a resident of Grand Terrace a lot longer than I've been, you know, serving on the council or on the planning commission, and as a resident, you know, your hand has been involved in a lot of what we see today in Grand Terrace. So, I want to thank you for that. We have wonderful parks. We have good roads. We have good future development. We may not have the oversight we had before, now that you're gone, but thank you for that. And I got to say, I learned so much. Thank you for that, and I learned a lot. And, I mean, if we can move on in life and having passed on some knowledge to other people to help them or help in the progress of the future, then I say, you know, you've been a great success. And I wish you great success, you and Bob, in your retirement years. San Clemente is so nice.
Been a long, strange trip, eh? Thank you so much for your service. We are kindred spirits, and I appreciate that a great deal. I've enjoyed our discussions and I've enjoyed our work together. It always pays off for the city to have a person with your capacity and your knowledge to be a part of running the city, and it's, you will be missed. And thank Bob for convincing me that it was a good idea to finally get to where you want to go. Now, I just hope that my wife doesn't use the same logic. Again, thank you so much. You're a good friend.
Well, Sylvia, thank you, you know, and thank your family, too, because sacrifices they make also, and changing vacations and, you know, giving you up for the city's needs and, you know, the city needs coming first a lot of times before family. But I remember the first time I met Sylvia, I think we were coming here for, to be put on the city council. We were going there and, you know, we're answering all these questions, and I wrote my wife, I go, oh, this lady, Ms. Robles, man, she's spot on. She should be on here. Well, she didn't get picked on there, but I was admired and impressed by the knowledge that she had about the budget, you know, and everything else. I was like, you know, and I think we had like 12 or, there was a lot of people applying for the council that time. And then when the next election came and, you know, and our family voted for, and we supported, you know, throughout other things, but, you know, Sylvia, you've been through the council during, you know, hard budget times. I mean, you got the idea for the, you know, so we could share and get funds from the sewer, from Colton, you know, helped us, the RDA, the resolution on that, you know, and pushing the youth organization and then, you know, bringing into, you know, so we could have a committee for the parks and recreation. So, all those ideas, and, you know, a lot of people, and some people don't remember all those ideas, and, you know, they weren't here, and then people only get half the stories, but, you know, Sylvia would roll up her sleeves and she would do it. And so, I'm going to miss you, you know, and even like we all bump heads a lot of times on this council, but we all come together for the greater need, and that's what counts. So, I wish you and your family a blessed journey on the new path that God has for you, and enjoy yourself. And I know you're going to be watching the council meeting the second and fourth Tuesday on a computer, aren't you? Okay, so if you could come up here, we have a little plaque for you and a little present for you.
So, I didn't want to open the whole thing up because I'm going to take it all apart. So, if you want to hold that.
I'll hold it for you.
I just want to say that a lot of things happen. I celebrated my 50th wedding anniversary, and for the last year, knowing that I wasn't going to run for reelection this November, we've been kind of watching the market, and we decided we wanted to live in either Dana Point or San Clemente. And during COVID, the housing market went at 43%, so like a $700,000 home would be almost $1.2 million. So, that was not going to work for us. So, town homes are three stories now. You know, there was condos, and people would be on top of you. Then there was one place that was a flat, and the only time I lived in an apartment was when I first got married. It was a luxury apartment, and every morning I could hear the gentleman upstairs pee and then go on the balcony and cough. So, when I saw this mobile home with the come up that I felt was good for us in our senior life, it had fallen out of escrow, and it was a price point I could afford. So, I made the decision that, you know, my husband and I need to come first in what works for us financially and timing, and the market looked like interest rates and getting my home sold. And I sold my home really the first day, and it took four days to get the contract up and a little more time to get the earnest money. So, I was born in San Bernardino in 1952. I moved here in 1976. I was 25 years old. I'm 71 years old, so Grand Terrace has really been the great majority of my life. At work, they used to tease me because people would say, what's a good community to live in? I'd say, Grand Terrace, and everybody would say, Redlands, and my coworkers would say, you need to move to Redlands. I'm, nope, nope, we like Grand Terrace. And, you know, it really is, I remember one of the county supervisors that I worked for said, you know, Grand Terrace is really the gem of the inland valley, that, you know, it just has a perch of a view that's just outstanding. And I think we're in our teen years in Grand Terrace, and a lot of things are going to come to fruition. Unfortunately, you know, in our civil daily lives, California's suffering a lot with homelessness and mental illness, and I hope we can get the leadership for that, although I'm not very helpful with what we had on the ballot locally for Grand Terrace. It's, we've got to do better, you know? A lot of people don't even understand the two political party system. They think you can be an independent, which isn't a party, and then vote, you know, in primaries, since if they're closed primary, you don't even get to pick who's going to be in the running. I want to thank the people who helped me on my campaigns. When they first started, they were little teenagers. Those teenagers now is one's in her residency to be a physician. One is a physician. Another one is a licensed psychologist. And, you know, two fell in love walking precincts for me, and they have a child now. So, and then my grandchildren grew up, and they did it for me, and so that was great memories. The other wonderful thing was the people that I've met being in civic government. The women's club, you know, I really, really, really enjoyed that. It was painful, the number of ladies we started to lose, and I think, you know, I don't want to suffer that anymore. Then some really characters, and I thought, I was going to leave my tissue, and then I thought I'd better bring it, I mean, but Terry McGuire Senior and Tara McGuire Junior, I just loved them, and I'm so grateful that our paths got to cross in this community. And I will have nothing but fond memories, and all of you have my phone number up there, and please, you know, if this goes right, I'll have my porch with an ocean view, and we can have some lemonade or hard lemonade, you know, we could decide. And thank you, thank you very much. Oh, and I just want to say, I had to resign because I was on a clinical trial, and I couldn't bathe. First, it was going to be 14 days, and then it ended up being six. So, that's when I was able to finally take a full shower today and be presentable. So, so please don't be insulted. That's why. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sylvia. We're going to have somebody, and we're going to go ahead and take a five-minute recess so people can say goodbye to Sylvia, and we'll come back at 6:25. All right, we're going to go ahead and read, convene at 6:25. So, we're on item D, new business, part one. Council selection, alternative to fill city council vacancies and order a special election, presented by Debra Thomas, the city clerk, and Adrian, city attorney. Debra, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Potem, members of council. Debra Thomas, city clerk, for the record, before you this evening, due to our recent resignation from council member Sylvia Robles, which was effective March 6, there is a vacancy now on your city council. Pursuant to the government code, it requires that the council select an appointee within 60 days of the date of vacancy or call a special election. In your agenda packet, we had resolution 2022-10 that also provided you with guidelines based on direction that was provided from the council previously on ways to accomplish that task. Therefore, just a little bit of guidelines. So, with those guidelines that were prepared, the initial meeting, which is tonight, is introducing to you this vacancy and explaining to you the guidelines that are going to take place. And then if you decide that you want to appoint an individual to fill this vacancy, the, within 15 days, we need to hold the first interview. The second meeting after that, which would be 15 additional days, that would be the candidate appointment period and then the special election, and I do believe I missed one. So, it was the interview selection within 15 days, candidate interviews within 15 days, and then candidate appointment within 15 days. In discussions with the city attorney, there is a little bit of confusion on my part, so I want to kind of defer to him on part of this because we can't hold a special election within 114 days from March 6. That puts us into August. Now, our general election is being held in November, so I would defer to the city attorney to try to explain how we can address that.
Thank you. So, the government code provides that if the council were to call a special election, the election cannot occur for 114 days after the call of the election. So, it's more than 114 days, and it has to be at the next general election. So, in this case, it's kind of wonky, a word I picked up, it's kind of wonky because the special election would effectively be at the next election. So, we were trying to, I was talking internally, if anybody had dealt with the situation, one interesting idea that had come up, which I think doesn't make practical sense, is you would have on the ballot in November a special election, if the council called for a special election, for that seat. That effectively is moot because you're also going to have the general election for that seat as well, because the seat expires in November anyway. So, you have to, it doesn't make sense to me, but that was one creative way to handle it. The other option, which I think is more practical, is if the council called for a special election, it would just be the general election for that seat. To me, that makes more practical sense. So, that's how you would address the special election issue.
So, with that being said, if you decide to appoint an individual, that appointment would need to be made by May 6, and if you wanted to defer to the election process, then we will defer to the end of the year in November. So, this is just presented to you to decide which path you wish to take. That's the end of my staff report. If you have any questions, feel free to ask.
Council, Councilman Henderson?
I confess to being confused. If the council were to specify a special election pursuant to the city attorney's comments, would the position remain vacant until November?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Councilman Holland, you have a question? I thought you did. You don't have to.
No.
Okay. So, like Councilman Henderson, so if we didn't do anything to seem like we were trying to show any favoritism or anything like that, we could leave the seat open since the election's so close? Because I'm still looking in my law library book for wonky. I don't know where wonky is.
It's a special term.
Okay. I wonder why you want your name on the bus, right?
Yes, sweet Adrian is what you said. What's interesting is also the way the government code reads is that the city council shall take an action, shall either call for a special election or shall appoint. So, it means that the council has to take some action.
So, we had to do one or the other.
One or the other.
Councilman Allen?
But I want to just make, I just want to make sure I'm clear and understand. So, the city council shall do one or the other, but if the city council, the election would, the special election would be at the general election.
That is correct.
Right.
That is correct.
So, the general election, you would just have special election? Do we have to pay extra for that?
I mean, that's something we'd have to work out with the county to see how they would handle it. My guess is, and it just appears guess, is that they would just say it's a general election for that seat. That's what I would anticipate they would argue.
I can't imagine that they would want, that they would say a special election when the, because the person could never take office, you know, they'd be elected and it would end that day. You know, like, I think that's what you mean by being a moot point, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so, so then, we wouldn't have, I don't think we'd have the added cost of a special election, would we?
So, what we need to do is go get Sylvia and bring her back for a couple months? Is that what we have to do?
If I may, with the understanding that this county of San Bernardino has all brand-new equipment, so each year we have been instructed that, you know, our costs will always increase here and there based on just dividing it up amongst the cities to pay for all of this brand-new equipment with the electronic voting. There's always that possibility that they may want us to hold that special election. It could be a cost factor. I don't know. I would just have to do that research and deal with our representative over there. They're not easily accessible right now because of the primary and still counting votes, so I will be able to make that determination in advance of.
Yeah, because so if they did say it's a special election and that one person runs for that one seat instead of going for three seats, that they could put their name on special election, and other people could be like, hey, I'm just running for the council? I mean, is that how that would work? I mean?
They could run in the special elec, we would have just two seats open in the general election and the one seat open in the special election because there are three seats up this year.
So, the individual who's running would just put their name into that one seat? You might have four people for one seat and nobody for the?
They could do both.
They could do both?
Mm-hmm. They could pull papers for both seats.
Mayor.
Or all three.
Councilman Henderson, did I correct?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm inclined to support the action that keeps the seat vacant for this reason, and I want to share my feelings with the community and the council because I'm a beneficiary of the appointment process. the appointment process, so I, I don't want to give people the, the misunderstanding. So I was appointed to the council to fill the mayor's second, or two years left on his term, and so here I am. This appears on the surface to be a very similar situation, except that we're talking about six or seven months, as opposed to two years, and that's a significant difference. When I served here as city manager, the council could not agree on the appointee, and so for the entire sixteen months, or whatever, I, I served a four-member council, and there was some concern about whether or not the council could have effectively worked together, and concerns about obstructionism and things of that sort. But I'm here to tell you that it went as well as it possibly could have. The council was wonderful. The council worked effectively together with staff, and so we got things done. I, I think this council actually works better than that council, from my professional perspective. And my other concern is if we appoint someone to the position, and that person runs for the seat, it appears as though, at least on the surface, that the council has put its thumb on the scale, supporting or, or giving someone an advantage or an opportunity that's not available to other would-be candidates. So I'm not sure how it would work mechanically, but if there's a way for us to call for a special election with the seat remaining vacant, that's a process or that I would be inclined to support. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Allen?
Mr. Mayor, have we had public comment?
We're asking questions still.
Okay, asking questions, okay, great.
Yeah, we kinda, there was a question slash comment, so. Councilman Allen, you have a question?
Would the candidates, if we called for the special election, if we chose that, and then there would be a general election also, I mean, the candidates would be required to pay the filing fees and all, and all of that, correct, Madam, Madam City Clerk?
That is correct.
Yeah.
Twice.
Twice, yeah.
If, if they chose to run for one of the two seats in the general, and then the special election.
I'm, do you know what that is now?
It would run about twelve hundred dollars.
Twelve, about twelve hundred dollars, isn't it? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I'm, I, I, the sentiments, I've, I know it's not a question, I, I have the same sentiments as Councilmember Henderson.
Okay. So basically, you guys are making a motion and a second to just keep it vacant? If we go back to that, cause I gotta do public comment first, all right?
There's no public comment, mayor.
Okay, there's no public comment. So I have one other question before we do that. Can you verify, I know where they're doing primaries in their county, but can you verify if it will be a special election, if the people have to pay double before we make a decision on this?
Well, when I'm saying they're paying double, if a candidate decides they want to run for the special election seat, they would pay their candidate's statement fee. Now, that's just their statement fee, the, the other fee is not much.
It's a statement fee, yeah.
Then if they decide, but they can also run for the general election, one of those two seats. That is a fact.
So we're just going on an assumption that they might just have that, instead of just doing a general election?
That's if they chose to do that. That's just, just a description of what would happen if somebody decided to run for two, two different, separate seats.
So the wise way to do stuff with government does is just have a general election for all three of them?
Let's hope that that's how it works out, and I, I'm sure it will, I, I, we'll get that worked out.
Okay, so before we go, Mayor Portem?
Thank you, mayor. Real quick, when we researched certain portions of the municipal code, when we were going to make some revisions, we found that there was no question about the fact that this council, by its body, could not remove a council member for anything other than just gross negligence. If that is the case, and applying the same logic, that means to me that appointing a person would not really serve the justice that is, that is provided for under our, our municipal code, and that's why I would be in favor of leaving the seat open until the election, when the citizens have the opportunity to make the decision.
Okay, so we have a first and a second, and agreeing, kinda agreeing on that, you know, cause I know we have some candidates that are gonna be running out there, and, you know, I can't pick a side, but the residents will speak about it, and I think that'd probably be the best. I think those four can work together, and I don't wanna have the councils showing a favoritism for somebody else getting elected too. So that's, that's what I'm thinking. Wait, I'm not done, Councilman Allen.
Okay, I just wanna?
Okay, hold on. So that's, now you made me lose my train of thought. All right, so that's what I'm thinking, is not, you know, just the logic that I'm thinking behind that, so not to show like, the council showing favoritism, and to let the residents make the decision. Now, I think if we had a year or so out, I think, oh yes, you know, cause I was appointed, I had two years left, and Councilman Henderson was appointed, and I think that's the way to go, cause, and I also ran too, you know? But I, that's just my train of thought. Councilman Allen, you wanna add something?
I only just, you mentioned that you have a, a motion and a second, and I'd just like to hear, I need to hear the motion again. I, I'd like to hear the motion one more time.
Okay. So we had no public comment?
Correct.
Anybody else have any comments on this? No?
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Go ahead, city turn.
The only comment I have, or suggestion I have, is would the council be open to directing city clerk to reach out to the county, to make sure we understand the mechanics, and make sure we understand how they plan to process? I don't think it'll change the decision, that it sound like is going to be made, but at least the council will be fully informed as to what the county plans to do with the election, just to make sure we're all on the same page. Cause again, this is a little bit of a, like I said, wonky situation, but I leave that to?
Isn't that what the city clerk just responded to? That?
I just asked her that question.
Right.
I will verify with the county that?
You wanna verify and bring this back, or you wanna?
Just to report back, letting you know that this is, this is how the, the process will work, and that we are confirming that we can hold this other general election, instead of?
It would appear to me, Mr. Mayor, if I might, that this Madam City Clerk could, could consult with the county, and if in fact, the information is substantially different than what she's represented to the council, then the manager could place this matter back on the agenda, future agenda.
Is, Mr. Mayor, is that, is that, if we give her the opportunity to contact the county, is that gonna eat into that fifteen-day timeframe that we have?
Oh, city attorney?
Well, first of all, it, it would, but again, that is just a guideline that the council adopted, to kinda govern a process for appointment. If, again, the council receives different information, we can always adjust that, that guidance and that policy.
I could, I think we should have, reach out and bring it back, and then go from there, and, cause just in case, you know, there might be, we might be doing something wrong, and just to, you know, cross the Ts and dot the Is, and make sure everything's going right, cause we don't wanna take anybody's chance away from serving their community, cause there's a lot of people that wanna serve the community, and, and we want them to serve the community, we don't wanna turn anybody around, but I think we should just double-check that, just to be sure, to make sure everybody's on the same page, and give everybody the right opportunity, the same opportunity. So we'll bring this back for later on?
If that's the council's?
Start it right with you, Ken?
I have a?
No, I, but we still got the motion, you wanna keep, you wanna do your motion?
Is this the initial, are we, is today the initial meeting?
Yes.
Yes. So if you don't wanna bring it back, and you just wanna go and leave it vacant, then, Mr. Henderson, you wanna do your motion?
My motion would be to proceed, to call for a special election to coincide with the general election, and to leave the seat vacant until such time as is filled with November.
Second. We have a first and a second. Please vote.
Motion, motion passes unanimously.
Okay. But on that, last note, just please, you know, anybody who's running, make sure there's gonna be, Deborah, keep Deborah busy, cause we have three seats open. Not to say I don't wanna kick everybody off here, but you know, just to make it fair. Okay, item E, the consent counter, the following consent counter items are expected to be routine and non-controversial, they'll be acted upon the city council at one time without discussion. Any council member, staff member, or citizens may request removal of the item in the consent counter for discussion. Do you have any requests removing items from, or for discussion?
Sir?
Councilman Henderson?
I'd like to remove the minutes from the last meeting.
For discussion?
Yes.
Any other ones? Adrian, you have anything to say?
Uh, no, but after the motion, second, I will read the title of the ordinance.
Okay, do we have a second for items two, and then four through nine?
A second.
Okay, so we have items two, four through nine, Adrian, you wanna?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The title of the ordinance for, I believe it is item number E4, is as follows, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Grand Terrace, state of California, amending chapter 12.08, street excavations of title 12, streets, sidewalk, sidewalks, and public places of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code in its entirety by establishing excavation and trenching standards. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion and a second from items two and four through nine, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, item three, Councilmember Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My concern, not my concern, there's an item on the agenda, on the, on the minutes from the last meeting, that reads as follows. Direct staff to bring back a future agenda item to discuss a potential conditional use permit review of J.C. Wallace House in accordance with Grand Terrace Municipal Code, section 18.83.032. Now, when I saw that, when I made that motion, and it was approved by my, my colleagues, I thought that the J.C. Wallace issue would be on tonight's agenda. And I know we've had discussions about how to get on the agenda, and suggested items for a future agenda, and the process that the, the council must follow. My colleague, Mr. Allen, has expressed a level of frustration in, in terms of city council members getting items on the agenda, and, yeah, I tend to share that frustration. I'm not sure why this item, the J.C. Wallace item, was not on tonight's agenda, and so that's why I, I pulled the item, because I expected it to be on the agenda. As it stands now, it's for a future agenda, so it looks like the council has to take three formal actions before this matter can be considered. I understand the, at least I think I understand the, the existing process, but I think that process almost certainly fails when it's a matter of urgency, like J.C. Wallace. When the citizens come here and testify before us, and ask us to consider taking certain actions, I think we're duty-bound to get to that task as quickly as reasonably possible. And if the suggested items for the future agenda gets in the way, I think we need to rectify that. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, there's, city manager, you have anything to say on?
The, the item was not ready to bring forward for this meeting, and, you know, we bring this as we are ready to bring it, and I understand that there's an urgency, but the, the staff needed time, still needs time, to put this together properly, and then to bring it forward. We don't wanna bring things forward in a haphazard manner. It is on the agenda, it's on a future agenda, and it will be brought forward as it's, as it's ripe, you know? And the bottom line is, I was gone the last two weeks, I can't put this on the agenda if I'm not here to work the problem for you, to have it ready for the agenda. So when, what, we, we put them on as quickly as we can, and when it's ripe, we put them on.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. At the risk of appearing argumentative, you were gone, I appreciate that. You appointed and acting, that person should be able to handle agenda item, and more importantly, this particular agenda item, as I understood it, my motion was to have it on the agenda so it could be formally remanded to the planning commission. I think that was fairly simple and straightforward, that was certainly the tone of my, my, my motion. So I'm unclear as to, as to what would need to be done, in addition to the motion that I made, just to have the matter formally referred to the planning commission, so the planning commission could conduct its review of the conditional use permit, and do the preliminary analysis that our code calls for, and what the citizens expect.
Well, at the minimum, we need to provide a little bit of background for you, and although there's, you know, somebody that is filling the shoes, they're not versed on what's going on on this, they're filling the day-to-day shoes. So this, this one needed to sit out for two weeks, and it will be on the next agenda. I, I needed to put that on myself, and be ready and versed for it, not come back with a day of preparation, and not, not able to answer the questions that may or may not come from council relating to this, as we go forward.
I appreciate that, thank you, Mr. City Manager.
I have a question in relations to that, when we do place an item on the agenda for future agenda things, what is gonna be our timeframe? You know, cause the, yes, the Wallace House is a hot topic, and it needs to go through the proper legal channels, but for other items, you know, like I know Councilman Allen talked about the ordinance for a street takeover, and I had some other ones, so I know there's some that's really pressing, and some that, you know, cause we have other pressing stuff. Are we gonna set a, a regular timeframe, we could come back, you know, have a, a set agenda, or set a time, hey, the pressing ones are gonna be on the, at least the next two council meetings, or how are we working that out?
We try them, to bring them back as quickly as we can, you know, the street takeover, one takes a little bit of legal review, and, you know, law enforcement review, so that we can have the information put together for you. Other ones, and I think we've had other ones that we brought back the very next meeting, it really depends on the amount of work that it takes for staff to get this prepared. It's not, it's not that they come through and we sit, we sit on them, there's, there's preparation involved on this, and actually, I've put a lot of effort into making sure that our future agenda item backlog is removed, and we, you know, at times, we've had quite a backlog, and to bring these items forward, because I know they're pressing, they're important to the community, they're important to the council, to be able to get out there and discuss.
Yeah, and, and that's, you, you hit it right there, important to the community, important to the council, cause, you know, be on the council for, for over almost decade two, is some items being brought back that, I forgot, we even made a motion like three or four years later, you know, and that's the thing, that's the problems that we're running into. And I, I know the slow wheels of government go slow, but I think, you know, this government wants it to be, everything, the bells and whistles on there, make sure everything we do is within law, and to make everything, you know, that the resolution gets brought up at appropriate time. And I know it can be busy, and you have to do your homework, cause we wanna make sure it's done right, and I know it's gotta go through legal issues and stuff, cause we just don't wanna do something wrong, and then also we have to come back, and we're getting sued for something. So I understand all that, but it's just, and I know we went through some of those agenda items to go through there, and I, I believe one was, and I put a big one on you guys, to look at all our old ordinances, I've been here since, you know, the beginning of Adam and Eve, cause we could get rid of some of those, you know, cause there's some stuff that's pretty, you know, we talked about, you know, about chicken coops and pig pens and all that stuff, you know, I don't think we need to worry about that. But important items, real important items, especially when we're, the, the chamber's full, and we're hearing the voices of the people, we need to expedite that, so, so it'll be on the next one, move over forward, so we could move to the planning commission then?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Does that answer your question? Councilman Henderson?
Yes, sir.
So you have a motion for item three?
I move to approve. I'll second.
A motion by Councilman Henderson, a second by Councilman Allen, please vote. All right, thank you.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, public hearing F. Item 10, introduction, first reading, title only, future reading, waive the ordinance amendment title 18 zoning of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code and amending the existing municipal codes, section specifying the design standards of new and existing trash enclosures. The ordinance will be enforced retroactively and implied only to new building and existing building underground. Undergoing alterations where the building permit is required per California Building Code A 105.1, with alteration imposing fifty percent or more of the existing total building area. Now, I could be a lawyer saying all that stuff, but I think this was brought up by Councilman Allen, right?
Councilman Allen, right?
You bet.
Okay. Well, this is all yours, man.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Luis Cardea, City Building Official. So tonight, it's the first public hearing for an ordinance to amend the municipal code amending the design standards for new and existing trash enclosures. So this item works currently with our 2030 vision goals, more specifically, item number three, which is to develop a proactive economic development plan to track new businesses and update zoning and development codes. So a brief background, City Grand Terrace UniCode currently does not really state any specific design requirements for trash enclosures in multifamily and non-residential properties that would really address issues, safety issues and illegal dumping. The current code states the following in Title 18, which is basically stating trash enclosures shall be screened by a six-foot-high decorative block wall with metal gates. Metal gates shall be attached to metal posts, and that's basically it. Fortunately, unsecure trash enclosures pose a threat to the health and safety of the public, as illegal dumping can significantly have negative economic and environmental impacts, as we have seen throughout many areas in the city. More, usually you see that more in commercial, industrial areas, usually areas where you tend to see more activity, also in multifamilies such as apartment complexes. In addition to negative economic and environmental impacts, unsecure trash enclosures contribute to life safety issues, which we will talk about more in the next few slides. Staff requests the City Council hold a public hearing to amend and update the city's existing trash enclosure requirements to include specific design standards for newly-built multifamily and non-residential buildings. So this would apply for apartment complexes, attached condominiums, basically anywhere you see multifamily. The design standards shall follow the city's objective design standards, also known as ODS in short, and include the following requirements, such as lockable front-facing decorative metal doors and a side door, a decorative metal cover with screening to prevent illegal dumping, build-up decorative material as permitted by city's ODS. The enclosure shall follow current California Building Code accessibility requirements as stated in Chapter 11B, which, this is actually very important, because the California Building Code for accessibility just states that the path to gain access to the enclosure shall be accessible, but does not specify that the enclosure itself inside has to be accessible. So I believe this is a major milestone. Also, a drain shall be installed and connected directly into the city's wastewater system. This ordinance shall not apply retroactively, but would apply to existing multifamily and non-residential properties where alterations are performed to a building that encompasses at least 50% or more of the total existing building area. So in addition to brand-new commercial, non-residential buildings and multifamily complexes, this ordinance shall also apply to existing non-residential and multifamily complexes whenever there's any remodels or alterations where a building permit is required that is in excess of 50% of the total building area, quite very similar to our fire sprinkler ordinance that we presented last year. For safety impact, so the proposed ordinance will significantly decrease the likelihood of illegal entry within trash enclosures and prevent the likelihood of any trash fires caused by illegal occupancy. Additionally, it will prevent any child-related injuries or deaths by making the enclosures difficult for climbing and falling. The proposed ordinance will significantly reduce the overall illegal dumping costs to businesses and multifamily complexes. So this will definitely address our ongoing issues with illegal dumping for local businesses. And here's an example of a trash enclosure in an undisclosed location where it basically follows the current code requirement to basically have that decorative block wall and the front metal gates. As you could see, very accessible. It's really prone to illegal dumping and illegal occupancy. And this is an example of what would trash enclosure under the new code would look like. So as you could see, it's secure, front metal gates, you have your side gates, a lot bigger, so more accessible for, basically with individuals with accessibility. And then, as you could see, more importantly, you could see the screen on the top, so to prevent any illegal dumping. As you could note, notice right there, not much trash around it, so very, pretty clean spot. And open to any questions?
Thank you, sir. The staff have any questions? Councilman Allen?
So I appreciate that report, and this looks great. I'm glad that the city is moving forward on this proposal that I had to clean up our, help clean up our city. So my question to you is this, have we explored any, I mean, is there any way that we can incentivize, maybe I'll direct it over here to the city manager, that current trash enclosures be modified? Or perhaps if, if, if after a certain number of citations from code enforcement? Because like your, your, your picture, which will remain anonymous, that's pretty routine at some of the, and some of the current business trash enclosures we have right now, is, is that look right there, you know? And I know we have, we got great staff and code enforcement that's out there, really beating the bushes, trying to get, make sure this stays under control. But I just wondered if we have a way that we can incentivize places like, you know, the Walgreens lot and the, behind the other strip malls that we have that have the open trash enclosures?
I would have to think on that. I don't have an answer off the top of my head.
Okay, that's, that's fine.
I know one of the triggers, and I believe Luis has this, is that it would trigger the same as ADA requirements. So if you do a major remodel, you do any kind of changes to the store itself, the trash enclosure goes with it. But just to take one that's existing and a problem one and force the change, I'd have to think about the mechanism on that.
Pursuant to Section 8 of the ordinance, it does not apply retroactively. It shall only apply to all applications for new buildings and existing buildings undergoing alterations where a building permit is required under the building code, with alterations encompassing 50% or more of the existing total building area. So that would be the trigger.
Okay, thanks a lot. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Can, piggyback on Councilman Allen's thing, if we can't force them for upgrade, can we do some kind of incentive to have them do the upgrade? You know, like discount on their business lives, discount somewhere else to do the upgrade if they do something like that?
We, we can certainly do incentives. I mean, that we would, we would somehow be, we would be funding that. And whatever that cost is, what was the last, I'm guessing, and I'm purely guessing, doing something like that's probably $10,000 or $15,000 per enclosure. So we would have to come up with some, some mechanism for funding that. I know with redevelopment, we used to do that for, you know, cook hoods and restaurants and sprinkler systems and those kind of things. With redevelopment gone, we have to find some other way. But I, I like the idea of, you know, if not a stick, I care it.
Yeah, because I was just thinking, like, if we reached out to BRTech or even because the state's doing all this mandatory, you know, separation, even if BRTech got involved or even if their state funds to do that, so can make sure we could take care of our businesses that they don't get, you know, fines from something they have no control of.
Mr. Mayor, I, I think your idea is a good one. I think we just need to be careful with providing money or the equivalent of money to support private construction activity. Generally speaking, not always, but generally speaking, you're going to trigger prevailing wage requirements on the construction activity if, in fact, we provide some level of incentive. And so the cost, both administrative and actual dollars for a prevailing wage project is significantly higher than one that does not have to pay union-scale wages. So if, my, my suggestion, if we were to pursue this, is we do the prevailing wage analysis upfront, so we know what, what we're dealing with.
Okay, any other questions? Do we have any public questions?
No public comments, sir.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing. The council deliberate the hearing. So what do you want us to make a motion to move on this before we have you read this, Adrian, or what we were doing?
After the, the motion and second, I'll read the title.
Okay. Do we have a motion? Councilman Allen?
I'll move the item. Second.
So a motion by Councilman Allen, a second by Councilman Henderson. Adrian, you want to?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The title of the ordinance for introduction is as follows. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Grand Terrace, California, amending Sections 18.10.090, 18.33.050, 18.36.060, 18.39.060, 18.40.060, and 18.56.080 of Title 18 zoning of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code to establish design standards for trash enclosures. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Can the council go ahead and vote?
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Luis Swier. Item G, unfinished business nine. Item H, new business part two. Community benefit fund granted award to Terrace View Elementary PTA in the amount of $2,000. Christine?
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, Christine Clayton, Finance Director. So the Terrace View Elementary PTA submitted a community benefit application to help fund their sixth-grade science camp, April 2nd through April 5th in Arrowhead. The four-day camp, at the four-day camp, the students will learn botany, geology, astronomy, energy, and conservation in an outdoor setting. And currently, they are requesting $2,000. And staff's recommendation is to approve the community benefit grant. And with us tonight is Rachel Plum from the PTA. She's their treasurer. Rachel, would you like to speak to council?
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. Thank you, everybody. I, I submitted the application for this grant because I really would love for our sixth graders to be able to enjoy science camp. Currently, we are in our second year of going to science camp, coming off of COVID. So I just think it's a wonderful opportunity. Currently, we usually have between five to 10 students who don't have the funds. Our family can't provide the funds for the, for the trip. So I, I just thought that it would be a wonderful opportunity if some of those students would be able to enjoy this opportunity with the rest of the students and staff that are going. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the council have any questions? Councilman Allen?
Hi, thank you very much for putting this application in. You said five to 10. About how many students will be going to summer camp, to this science camp?
There will be about 90 students going.
About 90?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
There will be 30 students in each sixth-grade class. Three classes are going.
Okay, great, right on. And do you, do you believe that this is enough to take care of the five to 10 that won't be able to?
Well, if it's not enough, the PTA will also be donating some additional funds to help out. But at this point, I don't really, I don't really, I didn't, I didn't submit the grant to try to make sure everybody can go. I just wanted, wanted it to be for, to help anybody who can't go. And whatever, we have some good community members, good parents that kind of donated last year as well. So whatever we come up with, we'll try to make it work and send whatever students that we can.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? So are they going to have fishing at the camp? Because it's going up to Arrowhead. Are they going to invent a better fishing pole at the camp? Because if you're going to Arrowhead, I mean, there's got to be fishing.
Well, my daughter went last year. She didn't mention any fishing, but she said they did a lot of science projects, they did a lot of hiking, learned a lot about weather, learned a lot of things. She said it was cold, but other than that, they had a wonderful time.
Yeah. Well, I'm sure, I, I, as a parent, I went up there, even Wiley's Farm and stuff, and it wasn't supposed to snow, and it snowed on us, and nobody brought anything. We were putting socks on our hands for gloves and stuff. And so I guess it was like the winter of Village Ford when we did that. But, you know, it's a great camp, and I know, you know, and that school does great things. Do you know if Grand Terrace Elementary does any of this?
Grand Terrace does not have a PTA, but I have been trying to get somebody involved. It, it's a big commitment, it's a lot of volunteer work, and it's pretty much like a full-time job. So what I try to recommend is people who are maybe not working, looking for a skill, kindergarten parents, even community members can be a part of the PTA. It's a wonderful organization, so I, I would ask that anybody who just has some free time just come and join it in any type of capacity. That's whether they just want to volunteer or be on the board. I believe it's a wonderful organization for not only the students, but for the teachers and the parents.
Well, God bless you for doing all that and helping out our future. Thank you. Any other questions? Do we have any public comment?
No, we do not, Mayor.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the council for discussion and motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the community benefit fund grant application for $2,000 to Terrace View Elementary PTA.
I got a motion by Councilmember Allen and a second by Mayor Protem. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, well, thank you for bringing that. And so, design section of the new, all-new electric senior bus that I got to go up and down on the lift, my career was rising, then I went back down, but presented by Judith Garcia, so.
Judith Garcia, Management Analyst with the City Manager's Office. Today, I'm here on behalf of the Public Works Department to present design options for our new senior electric bus. This presentation promotes engaging in proactive communication. So currently, our senior bus is a 2006 Ford E bus steered by the wonderful Ms. Vicky Thompson, whom you see in the picture here. Ms. Vicky nicknamed the bus Dinosaur. This bus has a gasoline-powered engine that transports 17 passengers, including the driver, by appointment only. After many years of service, it was time to bid farewell to Dinosaur. Our objective was to replace our beloved bus with an electric-powered one. For assistance in this new mission, the city pursued two grants. In January 2022, the council approved proceeding with the Volkswagen Environmental Mitigation Trust Grant for the purchase. So after a year of waiting, Phoenix Motor Cars, Inc. delivered to us our brand-new electric bus. This new bus now seats up to 15 passengers, including the driver. It also comes equipped with modern amenities such as a radio, backup camera, and retractable seat belts for safety and comfort. An EV charging station dedicated solely to our bus was recently installed, thanks to the OmniTrance. Now, let's talk about design. Here you see what our new EV bus currently looks like. With that, I will now present to you four design renders that I would like you all to choose from. So this is design number one, design number two, three, and four. So the winning render will be submitted to a design artist as a reference for the final design. So I ask if you can please vote, please vote only once, and if needed, we will narrow it down and vote again. So with a show of hands, who votes for number one? Number two? Number three? Number four? We missed one vote from Mr. Henderson.
I didn't vote.
Yeah.
Number three.
Number three. Okay. So with a majority of votes, it looks like number three wins. So, with the majority of votes, it looks like number three wins. So, again, thank you. We will submit this over to, this render will be submitted over for reference, and you will soon see the final design hitting the streets of Grand Terrace. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We should ask Ms. Vicky, what does she want it? She's driving it. All right. I knew, is that why you said, you kept saying three to me out there? You're the third person I know is, you kept saying in sentences and stuff. I'm sorry, City Attorney, you had something?
Do we want a public comment?
Oh, yeah, we forgot the public comment.
Mayor, we have no public comment.
See, that's what you get for having his vote before the public comment. So, number three it is. Are we putting Vicky's name across the the front part? Or, you know, so people could see it in the mirror, but it'd be backwards or put?
It'll be like on the fighter jet, right by the door and the window.
Can we have sirens and stuff on there, too?
Yeah, that's it.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Oh, item 13, Mayor's Appointed to Board Members, Commissions, and Committees. City Clerk?
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, members of council, Deborah Thomas. Before you this evening is Mayor's Appointments to Boards and Commissions. The Staff Report supports all adopted goals of the City Council's 2030 Vision and supports all adopted core values. With the resignation of former council member Sylvia Robles, it has left two vacancies on Board Committees and Commissions. The one is Board Member to the San Bernardino County Transportation Authority slash the San Bernardino Council of Governments, as well as the alternate committee member position to the Colton Joint Unified School District Community Cabinet. Pursuant to Government Code Section 40605, general law cities have the mayor appoint boards to the Boards and Commissions with the approval of the City Council. So, at this time, staff is recommending, that's subject to the advice and consent of the City Council, that the mayor appoint representatives to fill those two board positions. And if that appointment leads to any other vacancies, appoint to those vacancies as well. That's the end of my staff report. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
Okay, does anybody have any questions before I make a comment here? Councilman Allen?
Further down in the report is the, it has the chart that shows the vacancies and the positions assigned. And there's other positions that are vacant. Are we going to fill those tonight also? Or are we only filling what Councilmember Robles left vacant? I take, for example, the League of California Cities position. Both of them are open. It shows on that chart, anyway.
When we brought this back in January of 2022, the council had determined at that time not to fill those positions, and the reason being is that any council member can attend those meetings.
But they can't vote unless they're voting delegate.
When when the voting, when CalCities Conference is, will be bringing that staff report for you to appoint your delegate and your alternate about a month in advance.
Oh, okay, I see. All right.
Yeah, and that'll be coming up soon.
Any other questions? All right, so, in the past, because everybody was actually surprised when I went, because I'm the alternate on the SBCTA and the, I haven't gone to the government one yet, because usually it's the mayors, and the mayors do the SBCTA and Omni-Trans. And so, I like to recommend that I be put on the SBCTA and the San Bernardino County Government, and then I'm going to leave a vacancy for a secondary. And then on the alternate for the community, for the member of Colton Joint Unified. I know Councilman Allen is the primary, but I would like to ask Councilmember Henderson if he could do that. That's my recommendations. And then and then you guys, if you want to decide who wants to be the secondary on the SBCTA. So, I'm open for suggestions. Did I do that right, Deborah?
I apologize. I'm, I'm not following.
I said all that all together?
Who did you, who did you want to be your alternate for SBCTA?
I'm going to move from the alternate to the SBCTA, if the council agrees, all right? And the government, since I'm the, I'm the alternate right now. I need to have somebody move to the alternate position, correct?
Yes.
Does anybody want to take the alternate position?
I'll, I will. I mean, I don't mind. I've been there to a bunch of their meetings, anyway.
Mayor Pro Tem, you want to say?
Yes, I'd also like to put my hat in the ring for the SBCTA alternate position.
Okay.
And so would I, Mr. Mayor.
We did number three for the bus. I'm sorry, go ahead, Ken.
My comment is, if you look at at the end of the staff report, it indicates what council members are on which committees or commissions.
Okay.
And you'll note that Mr. Allen is a delegate just for one organization, and I'm not represented at all, although I was selected by the council for the League of California Cities Voting Delegate. So, it, no matter how this plays out, I just think there needs to be more equity in the appointments to the Boards and Commissions. Right now, we don't have that.
Okay, so you like to be the alternate?
Well, frankly, I'd like to be a delegate, but.
No, I understand that.
My point is, and I'm not trying to get us to rectify this tonight, it's just that, at least, I want to go on the record and for future reference, that we approach these appointments with more equity in mind than apparently has been the case.
Yeah. And one of the reasons why the equity, not saying it, Mr. Henderson, because when we had the election, and it was picked during then. But no, I understand what you're saying, and I'm just saying, like, we usually always did the alternate, moved up to the primary, and then the, then the alternate was left. So, I'm going to do the the primary, because, and the primary for that, SBCTA and the gov, government and the Omni-Trans, because those run hand-in-hand. But if you would like to do the alternate, I don't see any reason why you can't. I don't know if the other council members would like to agree with me on that.
I do. I agree with you. I'd like to see Ken's name on that list.
Okay.
Somewhere.
Mayor Pro Tem?
I believe I'm ultimately qualified for the SBCTA post, and I have the time, so I'd like to stay in there for alternate.
Okay. Deborah, can we move something else around in here? We're just, to these two? Is this it?
Well, based on past, we always do this every two years, and then just due to the vacancy, we just needed to fill these vacancies.
Okay, because I was going to make it.
Because we'll be coming back in January with.
Yeah, I know we will. All right. So.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I, I don't have a problem deferring to Mr. Allen or Mr. Wilson in this instance. I just think, as I said, my comments are for the record, and also, looking forward, I hope that we have a more equitable process to implement.
No, I agree with you, Councilman Henderson.
And I agree with Mr. Wilson's comment about his qualifications for the SBCTA, no doubt about that. I also have significant area, experience in that area. But I want it to be clear that I would defer to Mr. Allen and/or Mr. Wilson, depending on what their wishes are for the appointments.
Okay, so this is what I seen at the last meeting. They had the mayors doing both primaries on the SBCTA and the Omni-Trans, and they had the mayor pro tems as the alternates. Are we, can we agree on that? Councilman Henderson? For this one, because whoever gets mayor pro tem on the, on the next one, who's ever on there, whoever gets reelected, or if they pick the mayor pro tem will be the alternate for the two SBCTA and the Omni-Trans again.
I have no objection.
Okay. So, I'm going to make a motion to have Mayor Pro Tem as the alternate for the SBCTA and this, and the government? So, we need to vote on that? Please vote. Okay, so now we have the.
Mayor, we, we, nobody seconded your motion?
Pardon?
Nobody seconded.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do I have a second? I thought he said he agreed on it.
I second it.
Yeah. Agree, second. See what happens when you made us get on the bus at first, and you had us come in early? We all missed dinner.
Your mo, your motion passes unanimously.
Okay, so now, the community cabinet, because I know Jeff Allen's, you know, got his sleeves rolled up, and he does a great job in there. Councilman Henderson, would you, would you like to be the alternate for that, to work with the youth? With Councilmember Allen? Because you could both go to those community cabinets, because I've always been to both of them. We always had both of them. Is that all right?
Yes, sir.
Does anybody agree? Do I get a second on that?
Yeah, second.
First by me and a second by Councilmember Allen. Please vote. Now, on the.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right. One of us has got to go flat faster or slow down. I don't know. Probably me. So, anyway, like Deborah was saying on the voting thing, because I know we picked Councilmember Henderson for the voting delegate, and they usually do it every year, because I've been on two, and they flip it. And we usually ask, as a courtesy, if the voting delegate still wants to be on there for that. So, you're still on paper. And so, we just come back, just in case you have, or whoever's the voting delegate, because in the past, we learned that somebody was busy, because they changed the times. I think it's going to be in October this year for the League of Cities, right?
September.
Is it going to be September? I thought it was October.
Yes, sir.
All right. I mean, I like to still see you as the voting delegate, and then Allen, Councilman Allen was the alternate.
I would like that as well, sir.
Yes. Can we do that right now? Can we go ahead and vote for you? Want to wait till we get there?
Voting delegates for CalCities? No, not today.
Okay, all right. I want to make sure. I'm checking with the boss. All right. Okay, so we got that done. Thank you. So, item 14. 2023, 2024 Midyear and Year-end Budget Review.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers Christine Clayton, Finance Director. So, it's that wonderful time of year again, midyear and year-end budget review. So, it supports goal number one, ensuring our fiscal viability. Purpose of the review is to verify our mid-year actuals against budget and do our year-end projections, make sure we're on target, and propose any budget adjustments for the current year. And right now, we're going to go over our mid-year actuals, December 31st, 2023. So, as of December 31st, 2023, our general fund operating revenues received were roughly 3.4 million, or 43.1% of our approved budget of 7.9 million. And this is due to some delays in revenue. So, as everybody knows, you pay your property taxes in December and April. Well, that's when we receive the largest chunks of our property taxes. And sales tax is roughly two months behind from when the county sends it to us. So, again, we're on target. Our general fund operating expenditures as of December, as of December 31st, were 3.5 million, or 43, excuse me, 43.6% of our approved budget of 7.9 million. So, again, between our operating revenue and our operating expenditures, we're right in where we should be. And here's just a chart, so that you can see our approved budget versus December actuals. Now, for the year-end projections. So, in the first column, you have your approved budget, and at the bottom, the total of 7.9 million. Our December actuals at 3.4 million. Our year-end projection is 8.4 million. And the variance between actuals and budget is a little over $500,000. And that is mainly due to property taxes, as well as our sales tax. We still have positive numbers quarter after quarter. What can I say? We are doing fantastic. And so, that leads us to our positive earnings.
Christine?
Yes, sir.
May I just interrupt just for a sec? I had a brief discussion with Director Clayton and the City Manager yesterday on another matter. And they were going through this report, and I wanted to specifically call the council's attention and the community's attention to the fact that Grand Terrace is outperforming virtually every city in the Illinois Empire. Certainly in San Bernardino County. When I say outperforming, that means that our property tax and sales tax increases are going, continue to go up, whereas virtually every other city in the, in the county, their revenues are going down. So, I think that's a testament to the City Manager's leadership, our economic development program. And most importantly, maybe, I'd like to commend our staff in managing our budget and cost-containing at every step of the way. Thank you.
Conrad, do you have a question or a comment? Okay. Now, on to our projected expenditures. So, the approved budget was 7.9 million, and as of December, you can see that we were at roughly 3.4 million. We're projecting eight, almost 8.4 million, so we have an overage of almost $400,000. And we'll explain how we get to that. We have some mid-year additions that we would like to do, and we're going to talk about those in a little bit. So, again, here's a review, approved budget, our December actuals, our year-end projection overall, revenue versus expense, we're still going to be, to the good, $25,000. So, we're not taking more than what we're receiving. We're actually leaving some left for reserves. And then our year-end versus budget, there's the two figures. So, we're saving, or we're earning more, over 300, excuse me, $500,000 in revenue, and we're spending a little over $300,000. So, the net is $157,000. And again, here's just a recap. As of December 31st, 3.5 million, which represents, again, 43.6, as opposed to our approved expenditures of 7.9. And with 50% of the fiscal year elapsed as of December 31st, that results in a positive of 500, over $500,000 against the budget at 50%, which would have been 4 million. And I will turn it over to the City Manager.
Councilman Henderson, thank you very much for your comment. Appreciate that. So, why, this is actually a combination of two pieces. First, and as Christine talked about, is the additional, additional revenues, and Councilmember Henderson nailed it. We have, our consultants projected that we, our sales taxes would go down by about 4% this year, and also projected that our property taxes would pretty much hold static. What has happened is with the rebound in the economy, and actually, Grand Terrace is situated very well. We got hit pretty hard, and we're coming back very hard. Property taxes continue to go up. We're up about 2.5%. And sales taxes, we're up about 4.5%. So, and we're the only city, not in San Bernardino County, in the inland empire, that has had positive numbers for the last 12 quarters. So, this is really, really great news for us. Now, with that, we want to be careful that we don't go overboard. So, we've had really good revenues. The other side is, staff has worked really hard on the expense side. And, you know, one of the things that we do is every staff member gets the budget for their department or their piece of the city, and they manage it as their own entity. So, we've got guys out in public works, when they drop a screw, they pick it up, because they know they're leaving three cents on the ground, and that, that type of attention to detail. So, some of the things we've done in the organization-wise is we've cross-trained staff, especially at administrative levels and the downstairs areas, and across some unusual platforms. So, part of that is, it provides better customer care. So, when you come in, you're not sitting here waiting for the building clerk or the planning tech or somebody. There's enough knowledge across that somebody can at least help you and get you started. You're not sitting around waiting for somebody. To do this, we were able to reduce overtime. So, if somebody's missing, we don't have to backfill with overtime. Somebody can just fill that, pick up that workload. We've done really well with that. We've adjusted some of the schedules, too, so staff has some, some flexible days, some flexible hours, that we cover our breaks. So, we don't, we're not incurring any additional costs on that. And with that, we're able to eliminate a lot of the contract services that we had before, especially on staffing portions. To, to, to thank Adrian and his group, we've really kept a lid on legal costs. We restructured how we, how we handle our legal expenses, and Adrian has been very careful about managing those expenses. So, something that, you know, a couple of years ago was, was a big bill, is now very manageable for us. We, we spent some money last year on putting in security lighting, especially at Veterans Park and at Rollins Park. And that's coming to pay back, that we're not fixing. And that's coming to pay back, that we're not fixing vandalism like we've been doing, you know, go back and fix the same thing over and over and over again. Public Works is doing a, a great deal of work internally. So rather than contracting out to, we had the security cameras, we, we had a bucket truck here, we kept it an extra day. The guys went up and got some Windex, cleaned all the, the cameras, we saved that cost. Those type of little things, they add up to be, to be a lot. So in Public Works, it really has efficiencies. The other one that they're doing with the efficiencies is, we, you know, we staffed up Public Works about a year ago, a year and a half ago, with additional bodies, we're able to fix, do our repairs right, take the time, do them right, rather than just fix it for now and try and come back to it. And they're able to, you know, finish, finish their job and go on to the next one, and do some proactive work, which avoids some of the maintenance and, and the, the real expenses that go on. And then, you know, like I said, we're self-performing a lot, a lot of our work. You know, planning, planning in Public Works, we're, we're not using consultants as much at all. Part of this is through Adrian, is by helping us work with standardized contracts, standardized agreements, so we're not going back and ringing that bell over and over again, and using standard templates as we go forward. We've used interns extensively from Cal Baptist, from Cal State, San Bernardino, UC Riverside, especially in Public Works, as we're coming forward for our sidewalk and curb and gutter replacement work. They're the ones that physically walked out and measured and marked all the replacement pieces, rather than having a staff person or a Public Works person spend their time. Real cost savings. And then a big one is, is we're, you know, which we talked about last meeting, is assigning the, the costs for the consultants in environmental studies back to the developers that incur that. So this is, this is a big savings that we've had across the board. So with that, you know, as Christine said, we've got, we've got about five hundred thousand dollars to the, to the positive by the time we've, we've got our ad revenues and savings and whatever. Go ahead.
I don't want to get ahead of you, sir. I was just wondering if you were going to describe for a little bit the, the three hundred and eighty-two thousand dollar unanticipated expenditures that we encounter.
This is what we're doing.
Okay.
So for, between now and, now and year end, we would like to spend about four hundred thousand dollars, three hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. We have the additional revenue, so rather than take the money and hoard it, these, this, these are funds that the taxpayers have paid, that we've got now to perform things that we need to perform for the community. And I went down the priority project list. We would like to spend about a hundred thousand dollars on soil surveys and engineering for the Mountain Vernon slope, and a hundred thousand dollars for preliminary engineering for the stormwater system. Both of these, we continue to go for grants. These are a hundred thousand dollars on both of these is a drop in the bucket. But what it does, when we go for a grant, we've already started some preliminary work. When we submit, we've got some skin in the game, and we can actually scope what the grant is, and it shows that we're, we're trying to help ourselves, not just looking for handouts. We're going to spend about a hundred thousand dollars on the flock cameras, which are the, the law enforcement license plate reading cameras to set up through the city. And then bits and pieces, our animal control vehicle. It was, at the time, was, given the financial constraints of the city, was as, as good as we're going to get. What, what we have is an SUV with a dog crate in the back, and we're asking staff to put, you know, animals that have parasites on them and maybe in really poor condition and health problems into the same passenger compartment with our employee. So we're looking at, at an animal control vehicle. And then some of the other things, the turf on the ball field and basketball courts. We've got the roof on the EOC building is leaking, it's starting to, you know, drywall's starting to fall down, and there's some structural issues going to be happening. So these are smaller dollar items. We'd like to do a pilot program for Barton Road landscaping, that we can kind of get an idea and, and work forward with those. So all in all, it's, it's about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, four hundred thousand dollars of additional costs that we'd like to incur this year. Now, your approval tonight is not approving these projects. As they, each one of these things come forward, they will then be brought as an item for, for your approval. This is purely a budget, a budgeting process. And then at the end of this, you know, we will still have a positive year-end balance to go forward. So we've, we've got, we've got a little extra money. We got lucky in the sales tax and the property tax. We've worked hard to save some. Now we're going to spend it on the things that benefit the community. Are there any questions?
Council, any questions? Mayor Proten?
And just confirming, I, I realize what the process will be. Confirming that we already have money assigned for the preliminary planning for the library site.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. Can we use the old bus for the animal control thing? It's called dinosaur, no?
You know, I really thought about using it for all kinds of things. The agreement with, with getting the new bus and the grant is the old bus has to be crushed and destroyed.
Well, it's worth a shot. So, question, our reserve fund, are we still doing good on the reserve fund?
Yes, this does not impact our reserves at all.
Because I know we used to get that color chart, you know, how high we are on there. We don't, we're doing good.
We are, we are doing very well on reserves. Actually, we had some carryover from last year that, as, as we do next year's budget, which we'll be doing in a couple of meetings coming forward, we'll, we'll see what that does with the reserves. Because when we finished last year, we ended up with a couple hundred thousand dollars of money that we did not spend at the end of the year that then funded our reserves.
Okay, so on this, when we're bringing these projects up, do we have a good account that we're making interest off this while we're waiting? I'm just going to take pictures of Christine's thumb, so. Alright, let's see, what else can I get her on? No, I just, thank you very much, like Councilmember Henderson said, you know, the, the budget's always been like, you know, you guys have a big job for you. I mean, the way the city does the budget, the way I do the budget's totally different, you know, but, um. I know we're doing good, you know, this little city can hopefully move forward, you know, especially with, you know, like, I'm happy with what you're saying about the flood control and everything else has been kept pushed aside in our flood, you know, the camera system and stuff. Because I know everything on that list is a, is a great asset that needs to be done. I know we only have so much, but, you know, this is great being in the positive, and hopefully we can maintain that. And, you know, I know our city's just still conservative on these issues and stuff, and I trust our staff a hundred percent. Any other questions or comments for, no? So is this just a receive and file, or wait to vote? Oh, Councilman Henderson? We're going to put you over here now. I'm going to have everybody over here so I can turn my neck.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'll be brief. I, I just wanted to echo your comments and to, to commend the City Manager and the Finance Director for what I believe to be an excellent report. And I love the fact that the additional projects and activities that we're funding with the three hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars were visible to the community, where they don't have to guess that the money went into City Hall and disappeared, never to be seen again. So thank you for that as well. I don't know if that was your intent, but I'll, I'll give you credit for it, so. Good job by staff and everyone concerned.
Thank you. And that was the intent, that the community sees what's, we're, we're not adding staff, we're not adding fluff, we're adding where the rubber meets the road, and things need to happen.
So we'll be seeing this every year, right? About a million dollars next year over.
All, all depends what happens on the sales tax.
You have to keep moving up, Christine.
If, you know, if our residents continue shopping in the city, if we continue to attract the businesses like we have, if our community keeps growing in value, and part, a big part of that is driven by our residents taking care of their properties, doing the things they need to do to keep the community looking good, yeah, there's no reason that we don't, we should not see this type going on and on. This is driven by good things happening in the city.
Well, I appreciate, I appreciate all the residents, you know, just shopping here. And, you know, we're taking care of our issues that we have, but just, you know, this is still a great little city with a lot of potential still to grow for future generations, and that's what we're all looking at for our council, you know, for the next generations to raise their kids. And, and like I said, I know we have some hiccups, but once again, thank you very much, and, you know, we appreciate it. So this is receiving files, so I guess you can receive and file it, right? Okay.
Mayor, for the record, there is no public comment.
Oh, yeah, okay, is there a public comment?
Thank you.
I don't see that written in here, Deborah.
You know, that was, I noticed there are a few things missing. Sorry about that.
No, it's my fault. You think I would learn by now, right? That's the whole thing. You're testing me. Okay, there's, is there any public comment, Deborah? No? Okay. Alright, future agenda items. At this time, the City Council may proceed to items for discussions or actions at the future duly-agenda City Council meeting. A consensus of the majority of the quorum is required to be placed on the items for future agenda. You changed the wording on this paragraph, didn't you? I thought I had this memorized, but. Do, does the council have any recommendations for future agenda items? Not right now? Alright, great. There's no public comment on that, right? Alright, I want to double check. So, City Council Communication, Councilmember Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I traveled with the mayor here in town to an event called Read Across America at Terraceview Elementary School. And it was wonderful. It was inspiring to see hundreds, it seemed like thousands of kids, out there on the asphalt surface in a bright sunny day, with, all with their books, reading to each other and to their teachers, and to the visitors, Bill and myself and a few other folks. It was a spur-of-the-moment decision on my part. Thanks, Bill, for the invitation. And I can't, I can't say enough good things about the teaching staff and the personnel at that school and what those kids represent. I also, Bill and I tag around. I also followed Bill up Blue Mountain, or tried to at least. I was actually doing pretty well. It was a wonderful day, even though it was wet and kind of muddy. But it was wonderful to see people from all over the community and outside of Grand Terrace, coming to Grand Terrace to participate in the Blue Mountain Walk. So kudos again to staff for the work and the organization that that entailed. I had a cramp in my arch, my left arch, about two-thirds of the way up, maybe a little bit more. Bill gave me his Gatorade, and that helped a little bit.
I think it was like about fifty feet up, I don't know.
Anyway, had a good time, got back on a flat surface and was able to get rid of the cramp, and, and so I'm a, I'm a better person for it. For several years, I was a Board of Trustees member for the Ronald McDonald House, and formed a really good relationship with the Executive Director, Karen Hooper. And I learned through the President of the Lions Club that she was going to be making a presentation to the Lions Club. I attended that meeting of the Lions Club. It was a good meeting. If you, if you ever want to do God's work, volunteering or working at Ronald McDonald House is, is definitely the, the way to go. It's a transformative experience. Had a couple of, more than a couple, community meetings on the street during my walks regarding J.C. Wallace, and I won't beat that, that, that drum about that. We know what we need to do, at least the steps that we're going to be taking. And so I appreciate the effort put forth by staff and the council in trying to resolve that issue going forward. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. You still owe me a Gatorade too, so just remember that. Councilmember Allen?
Okay, thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I, I too attended the, I went on the Blue Mountain hike, went over there early that morning while they were setting up. I want to thank all the, the staff who set the place up, and the folks who manned the pop-ups with various, the various entities that were in, using those to offer things to the residents who come, came for the hike. I want to especially thank the property owners of the, of Blue Mountain. You know, they, they take a risk whenever they, but they want to be a part of the community. And they are a part of the community, and so I really appreciate the property owners working with the city and allowing us to do this once a year. And especially the residents who came out, even though we had to cut it short, I want to appreciate the ones that came out and enjoyed the, the hike up our namesake. You know, there's a nonprofit that needs, I want to make sure and mention, that's the Friends of Blue Mountain. Really want to thank them for their years-long endeavor of trying to establish this park for the Grand Terrace residents, you know, to enjoy forever. And so I want to thank them for all the, they've done to make that possible too. That's, yeah, that's all I've got, Mayor, and so thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Proten?
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing to report.
Alright, let's see. Thank you. So yes, the Blue Mountain hike was great. It was one hour, but, you know, staff, we made a command decision, I'm glad they did, because it was kind of dangerous up there at the rain and, and people sliding. And then, of course, the following weekend, Murphy's Law is just beautiful, so. But, you know, I hiked up there and the girls, the cheerleaders were up there with their little medals. And if I would have known it was the same medal, I would have saved my medal from the year before and act like I went up to the top. But anyway, we hiked back down and, and the staff did a great job. Thank you for coming out on your weekend and, and helping everybody. And so after burning all those calories, I went to Stater Brothers and bought Girl Scout cookies, once again. And I think this is the last week for Girl Scout cookies, so. So please support the Girl Scouts. The sheriffs, you know, want to, you know, one thing, thank you Lieutenant Lane, when, you know, I do call you and stuff. And when I call Lieutenant Lane, when I see a homeless person, I'm calling him to have to go look to see if that person has a need. You know, we've got to make sure, because there's people out there that do have a need. And we, the, the sheriffs do offer them programs and everything to get them off the streets. And it's up to them to take it, but, you know, some people, the sheriffs have to confront, unfortunately, you know, they get arrested. So as we're going back, the Grand Terrace is not immune from all this. We are seeing the traffic. You drive to Loma Linda, you see the traffic of it. I go to the VA, I see the traffic. Not all of them are homeless vets, you know, I see in Redlands. So we're, you know, the state's got a big issue to deal with, as Councilmember Henderson said. We have a, a big issue with the homelessness and the mental illness and the drug dependency. So if you do see something that's not right, please call the sheriffs. And if you can't get ahold of sheriffs, you know, you, you can get ahold of me and I'll get ahold of sheriffs. But please call the sheriffs and, and let them take care of it, because I don't want anybody getting hurt. And I have seen, I dealt with somebody who's mentally ill or somebody on substance, and you don't know what they're going to do. So your life is not worth that, you know. Call professionals and let them take care of it. Take a picture, do what you can to send a picture, but please, just be cognizant and, you know, go home to your loved ones and, and let the people take care of it. And, and as we're working on these issues, because I did call the mayor, Colton, and ask him to look into our homeless encampment we have on their side. And he's, he says he's dealing with four property owners on there. I don't know, but I will call, I keep calling them every week, and I ask them if he wants to do a joint adventure, because it is getting bad, the homeless are coming in people's backyards and taking things. But if you do see a homeless person come in your backyard taking something, or anybody come in your backyard, please call 911. And, and I, yes, I want to thank everybody, like I said, for the Blue Mountain, you know, Dr. Sieg, you know, opening up his property, Dennis Kidd, you know, just a great event, you know. And I don't know when it's going to be open all year. I know we've been doing it for a long time, but, one day, but it's just a great event. And it's, you know, it's great seeing the community, you know, we didn't have as many because of the rain, but that's just how it goes. It comes and goes. And then, and the Read Across America, Councilmember Henderson's a great group of kids and teachers. Those teachers were teaching my kids, like Mrs. Marquez, she, she gave my sons homework when they were in kindergarten. I didn't understand that. We ate glue in kindergarten. We didn't do homework. But Colton Joint Unified School District has great teachers, and their number-one job is to make sure that the kids are ready for their career. My sons were ready, and as a parent, when you're working with that and you do that. And I know there's a lot of homeschool too, and, you know, the homeschool teachers and stuff. I have a young lady across the street. So it's you parents are the ones that make the difference. It's you parents are the ones that give support. It's you parents are the ones who are bringing your kids up. You know, the city's here for you, but it's your parents are the, the ones that are going to pull responsibility. to pull responsibility. And God bless you parents for doing that, you know? I think about my granddaughters. So that's all I have. City manager, any communications?
Yeah, real, real quick on Blue Mountain, thank you, everybody involved, also sheriffs, fire, you know, those guys are out there in the rain, they could have bet it back in their station. So thank you for everything and I apologize to the community that we pulled the plug early, but it was a safety concern, we'd have one person hurt and we didn't want to have any additional issues. The sheriffs, sheriffs and fire were happy at the base, they didn't need to go rescue people off the top. As a, just a heads up for the community, the work on Barton Road, on the far west end of Barton Road is, started work today, will be going in earnest here the next couple of days. So there will be some traffic control issues coming and going as we work on that piece. There's also a fairly large Edison project going on right adjacent to us. Of course, you can't have one project without another one on top of it. So that, that curve in Barton Road going into Colton's going to be a fairly busy place for the next couple of weeks. So please be careful as you go through there. Other than that, thank you.
I have one question for you. You're talking about the projects in the Barton Road and stuff. We also have a, Southern California, the gas companies doing major projects too on some of the roads, on the ones over here behind the Green Belt and stuff?
Gas company's doing some projects off of, I'm trying to think of the name, Preston and back in the, back in the corner, back there. They're fairly substantial projects, large pipeline, not regular gas, gas line work.
And so if you see them out, you know, and that's the thing, like you said, if you see them doing the work and you could do an alternate route, that's always great. That way people aren't, you know, harms way and, and safety for both of you. But thank you, Conrad.
Lieutenant Lane has a comment he'd like to make too.
I was going to ask him and the fire department too, if they have any comments.
Couple of things. Yeah, and I'll be brief. On the homeless, I want to thank you for reminding folks to, to call us when they see things like that. Obviously, we, we can't be everywhere, but we do try to be responsive to those types of things. And, you know, we're, we're going to go and address those situations when they occur. And, and of course, the first goal is to, to figure out what sort of help they need. And then, and then we go from there. But I just wanted to remind people too, that confrontation is not uncommon. And if certain people are willing to be confrontational with us, they would certainly not hesitate in being confrontational with, you know, with somebody walking in to, to do some shopping. So with that in mind, if there's a problem we need to address, you just give us a call. Our, our public dispatch number, I can provide it now, it's 909-387-8313. And, and that'll get a deputy heading that way. So we're, we're probably the best to, to deal with those things. They, our hope team is also aware of the encampment and it's on their list to, to come and address. And I, and I don't know when they're going to get there. They mentioned sometime this week. They are aware of also the proximity to the residents that are along that area. So they're going to make that a priority, but they're, they're a busy group, so they'll get there and I'll let you know as soon as that happens. On the Blue Mountain hike, we, we love being there. Our search and rescue loves, they live for rescue. So if some, more people would have gotten hurt, that would have made their day. Glad nobody did, but that's what they're, they're for and, you know, we, we come prepared for that. As far as business goes, I just wanted to let everybody know, a report that we did an OTS DUI saturation patrol on the ninth, which was Friday last week. We had some additional officers here in the city. They made a, a total of 27 stops, issued 20 citations, found no DUI drivers, which is a good thing. So that was a, a successful operation. And on a side note, and I didn't intend to tie this into subject matter from earlier, but as my sergeant was relaying the results of this to me, he said, he was sitting right here in the parking lot, watching traffic here on Barton at about 10 o'clock. And saw about 200 cars flying down Barton in a row pretty fast. And they all funneled into Stater Brothers. Obviously, it, it appeared to be a takeover, a street racing kind of a crew. And I thought at that moment, I'm, well, where the heck is Johan? Is, is he at home tonight at 10 o'clock? Is it, it's a little late for him to be out with his, his, his boys.
Yeah, 7 o'clock is bedtime.
Yeah, that's what I thought too. But the sergeant got his, his guys and then the, the patrol deputies there. So those folks were not prepared to be surrounded by six deputy sheriffs with lights and sirens. And we cornered them in Staters, contacted a number of them, wrote some citations and within pretty short amount of time, they were on the road and hit the freeway. So we got lucky that we just happened to be out in force that night. Two units might have had a little bit more difficulty in trying to get those folks out. But that, this was the second time that I'm aware of that they've come into the city. This one was not a success for them, so hopefully they'll find somewhere else to go. That'll, may tie into the need for future discussions about the takeover stuff. But again, we, we, we do have the tools that are, that are available now to, to deal with certain people that want to behave like that. So I, I want to thank, you know, shout out to my guys who were there and handled that very professionally and they did a great job. And hopefully that was a deterrent that'll keep them out of the city for a while. And that's all I had.
Thank you. Does the fire department have anything?
Yes, Mayor. About a month ago, Chief Muncie came and we had the measure W presentation. And as you guys saw, we're holding at about a 55% of a no, which means a no repeal. And the final results will be out on Thursday. So I just wanted to say thank you for the support from the citizens here in the city of Grand Terrace, the council. It's greatly appreciated by us. Thank you.
Thank you. So does that mean you're going to get all your W signs down in our city now?
Yeah. I will contact the union.
All right. Well, thank you, gentlemen, for all the work and stuff. And I, I wanted to ask one other thing, probably the city manager, I'm sorry again. The graffiti, I noticed a lot of graffiti over there on the future projects on those buildings. Over there off of Barton, on those buildings back there, where we just tore down the warehouse and before we get to the bridge.
We'll, we'll get code after the property owners to clean that up. That's actually the, coming from the homeless camp on the other side of the line. Hopefully when Colton gets their, their piece cleaned up, they'll clean up as well.
That's getting down to hand. Okay, well, I just want to thank everybody. And, you know, I would like to close our session, you know, and honor Councilmember Celia Rolles, Rodriguez Rolles tonight, you know? Honor her tonight, you know, in this agenda item. And, you know, like I said, wish her and her family the best. And one day, I hopefully will get to be there, but you know, just, she worked hard in the city. I know a lot of people had stuff, but you know, it's, it's not easy here making decisions. There's some tough decisions that have to be made and some unpopular decisions that have to be made and some very popular decisions that have to be made. So, you know, I'd like to close in her honor tonight and nothing else. We'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting. The city council will be, the next city council will be, will be held Tuesday, March 26th at 2024, year 2024 at 6:00 p.m. Any request to have an item placed on a future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk's office. Good night and God bless.